Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Alderwoman Shaw. That was one of the steps I neglected to do, so thank you.
That's all right. Thank you for catching.
Our public is only my husband. Oh, and Rob Cuomo, sorry.
Okay. All right, so then we will move on. The item for tonight in the agenda is the one item. I received a call from Congresswoman Moore's staff last week that explained to me that the debt ceiling negotiations were taking a turn such that one of the things that we're likely to see happen with this bill, and I think the language of it just came out last night, so is now being circulated. One of the things that is in there is a clawback of any unallocated funds from ARPA or COVID. So if money was sent out, you know, to pay for vaccines and stuff like that, or money was sent out for infrastructure projects, and it hasn't been allocated to a project, then that money must be returned to the federal government. And so the reason Carl had already presented to us a plan for some improvements to Clutch Park. And and so he presented that to us in a past meeting. We like that concept. Well, now at this point, we probably need to allocate funds to it, or we're going to lose them. So that's the reason for tonight. We're meeting tonight. We can have an action tonight. This bill isn't going to get voted on until probably the Friday. And so if they vote on a bill on Friday, then we've done our due diligence in getting this money allocated to a project before we before the the federal legislation might want to clawback any unallocated funds. So that's the reason for tonight's meeting, and I will turn it over to the city administrator to just sort of remind us or refresh us on the project he proposed. And a couple other, I think, improvements at Maslow ski park have also come up.
I think you, Mayor Kennedy. Yes, in 2021, the city of Glendale received approximately $1.5 million in ARPA funds as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The United States Department of Treasury.
We actually received about 1.8, but we spent about 300,000 of it on lead pipe lateral replacement. So 1.5 is what's left. Sorry.
That is correct. No, sorry. You are. You are correct about that. We have about 1.5 approximately $1.5 million in remaining ARPA funds that we're looking to allocate as a use for. The Department of Treasury has allocated specific purposes and intents for the use of these ARPA funds, and those are listed in the memo provided in the agenda packet. As an interpretation of that, the city of Glendale or any other city or town or village that received ARPA funds can use these funds for these purposes. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is to talk about what the general consensus is for the allocation of ARPA funds. We presented two improvements, and both of these improvements happen to be within Clutch Park, which is a county park. The idea with these funds and the purpose of these improvements would be to start to build community areas and parks within the city, being that. Oh, thank you. I was just describing the the purpose of the allocation of the the ARPA funds towards park improvements. While these proposed improvements are both within the county's Clutch Park.
Is this posted?
Excuse me, what?
Yes, it was posted last week. It was posted on Friday.
I can't hear you. Hold on.
So yeah. Week I called a special meeting last Friday.
Hello?
Yep. Can you hear us? Well, I can hear you.
Did you click on mute?
Is your speaker volume turned up?
I can't hear you.
Brian, maybe she calling us? Maybe you call her.
I just texted her. I asked her if her speaker volume was turned down by chance. Because we can hear you, or we can hear her is what it says.
I.
Can you hear us now if we talk?
It just started, and I could just hear you all of a sudden.
Okay, perfect. All right. But yes, the meeting was properly noticed last week. As you'll notice, Mr. Cromwell is on here, so he obviously saw the notice. And so, yes, it was noticed on Friday. So I'll turn it back over to Mr. Warwick.
Thank you. Yes, the the two park improvements that we are discussing tonight is the possible improvement to the northern area of Clutch Park, north of Green Tree, which would tentatively involve the installation of a couple basketball courts, pickleball playground area, pavilion, and then a walking path and sort of dock boardwalk area to the Milwaukee River. The total estimated cost of that improvement is approximately $800,000. We have had tentative conversations with Milwaukee County regarding the city leasing that area. It would be our responsibility to maintain that area if and when the city would build a park in that area. The other item up for discussion is a skate park. And and a proposed location would be sort of a southern area near the waterfall for a skate park with an estimated cost of $700,000. And again, the city would be responsible in a lease agreement if Milwaukee County approves of both of these items for the city to maintain it and build it. So we are looking for just a discussion tonight on the use of the remaining ARPA funds. There's certainly other costs and things that the city could allocate it for. You know, my just personal thoughts and opinion on this was to try to allocate it specifically towards areas to directly improve and enhance the city of Glendale.
And binding is the actual choke park, you know, how binding is this particular solution against the 1.5?
What do you mean, how binding is it?
Well, we say this. Does that mean we have to spend it on that?
Well, if we we have to allocate it to a project in order to have that money not be subject to a clawback. So I believe it would be in our best interest to pursue that project. If there were some leftover funds from it, then we might be able to find another another project that that we could take some of the leftover funds. As I'm finding with any construction project with the city and with MMSD, there is no such thing as leftover funds right now. It'll probably end up being more than the 1.5 million. There is. I did want to say there is precedent. Greenfield has done significant improvements to Kewicki Park. South Milwaukee has done improvements in Grant Park. And while those are not owned by they're owned by county parks, the cities have said these parks are fully in our cities. You know, we kind of see them as ours, and we're wondering to spend some money to improve the county parks because the county park that's in our city, because the county doesn't have the money to do the improvements. So I'll open it up to comments and conversation before we would have a motion. For Alderman Schmelzling and Alderwoman Shaw, you're going to have to like really wave at me because I can't. I can barely see you. So I say, okay, Alderman Schmelzling is waving his hand, and I saw Alderman Gellhard first. I'm going to recognize Alderman Gellhard and then Alderman Schmelzling.
Yeah, I guess. I guess first to to Jim's point before, it's like, if we if we go in this direction, we say we're allocating it to these projects. And then we decide, let's say, as we look into it, it's going to be vastly more expensive than the 1.5 billion that we have. Are we able to say, okay, well, let's pivot and and apply it to some other project? For instance, is that going to be a possibility?
So I I have not read the text of the federal legislation on the debt ceiling. It is my it would be my guess that if we chose to move it to to reallocate it to a different fund, that at the time of the clawback, which is probably going to be in about two or three weeks, if it's unallocated, we lose it. If we end up like, say, that say, these two projects end up being $3 million, and we can only do one of them. We just do the one, and that's it. Or if we had some other major emergency that came up, and we needed to reallocate the funds to that purpose, they would need to be still spent in a timely fashion by the city. So but the most important thing is the clawback request is going to come probably sometime this summer. And if we have the funds allocated, then we we're not going to lose those funds.
The other question I had is, do we have any idea of how much the upkeep is going to be for either one of these projects, the ongoing expenses?
Thank you for that question. We have sort of tentatively begun discussions internally here with the staff and with Milwaukee County regarding these improvements. We had to bring them to the forefront as a result of this federal legislation. So staff has not had the time to really research that, other than to know that, you know, as parks equipment does degrade and basketball courts do crack, and, you know, skate parks will do the same thing. Those are repairs that will have to be made, you know, having experience in other communities with a number of these facilities. These repairs do happen. It's not something that I've seen as an extremely expensive or costly maneuver to make with playgrounds and with basketball courts, pickleball courts. You know, those are things that generally hold their own out there.
Do you have anything else, Alderman Gellhard? Okay, I'll go to Alderman Schmelzling.
Thank you. Two thoughts. So first of all, I I know there's also other things we could put some of these funds into, and and I do agree that our parks are, especially with Milwaukee County and some of the challenges they're having. We definitely could improve those and make them into additional more local areas for the little sub communities we have. So I'm not in disagreement with that. And actually, I was just at the Chicago Skate Park over the weekend. So definitely something we are lacking in in the side of town. I know my son, he's an avid skateboarder, and what we have at the closest we really have is in Wauwatosa is where we would have to go to get something that would be frankly usable. What we have at Estorbrook is just an old tennis court that was kind of converted with not much at all, and it's actually kind of shady back there. So I I guess I'm thinking something else that we could utilize some of this funding for is the bike and pedestrian plan sidewalk extensions that we we probably would not get funded through grants. So there's certain areas. I'll advocate, of course, for my districts along Green Tree potentially that could have some of this funding. So I guess I would be suggesting that if we wanted to look to alternative approaches to this funding, potentially a carve out of it that we could prioritize some of that to the bike and pedestrian sidewalk extensions. So I'll leave it open to discussion, but then I'll probably make a motion later once everybody chimes in.
Thank you. Alderwoman Vukovich, I believe you had raised your hand a moment ago.
Um, where is this? I I heard Carl say something about the skate park. Where? Where is he trying to put this?
Skate park would be a little north of City Hall between City right as you enter into Clutch Park, a corner of Bender and Milwaukee River Parkway at that big field. And then.
You probably used to be ice skating. Is that the one you're talking about?
The one that then became a one where you used to park on the Fourth of July until it became a single.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you had the right place.
Yes, that one. Yeah. And then the other proposed improvement would actually be the one he shared with us a meeting or two back that would be at Green Tree and Milwaukee River Parkway.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Of floors open, anybody? Joanne's raising her hand. So sorry, Alderwoman Shaw, you're next.
Question about you're talking about Bender and Milwaukee River Parkway. Is that not the soccer field right now?
It is a soccer field. It is a lacrosse field. About two thirds of it is used. There is an area that could be turned into. There's a portion of it that could be dedicated to creating a skate park area.
Also, with some of the stuff you're talking about is where some of the stuff we would be, we as in Glendale would be responsible for the upkeep of these items that you're requesting?
Mr. Warwick?
Yes, the city of Glendale would then assume the responsibility of that area of the park is from my understanding of what has occurred in other communities with agreements for those communities that have done improvements in county parks that they become responsible for the mowing and the upkeep of the area in and around the park area that you improved.
Because I would compare that to what we currently own, which is partially the bike path and upkeeping in that and the pathway going from the bike path to Maslow ski park where you're looking at there. There's tons of weeds that are along the pathway that haven't been taken care of, as well as any of the equipment that's being maintained or not being maintained at Maslow ski park to begin with. So if we can't keep up with that, how are you expected to be keeping up with what we have that we're proposing here?
That's a very good question, and I don't have the answer for that tonight, but I will definitely make sure that we look at the stuff that has not been maintained in Maslow ski park as of today, because it should be.
I just ran on that trail yesterday. I I don't know what area you're talking about. And one, first of all, the the playground equipment is only a few years old. I haven't heard of any upkeep issues with the playground equipment. I don't know if Mr. Warwick has, but in terms of the trail, I didn't. I mean, I saw all the natural vegetation that's on the sides of it, but that's the same as it is every year. So I did. I guess I don't know what area you're talking about.
Basically, the path that was put in between Maslow ski park and the bike trail, because I've noticed by where the benches are, weeds are all over the steps. So if somebody walks on that, they're not going to be able to get to the steps very well to be able to enjoy those areas. And then my thing regarding Maslow ski park, for the most part, is the the sound equipment for people who utilize the stage.
Okay, could those things be added to this as potential items, and then we'd sort it out as we go through the process of getting bids and looking at things?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. We made sure that we put a little leverage in the cost estimate. So hopefully, we obviously don't know what the bid environment is going to be next year, but that there's some room in there to do some of those other things that may come up from time to time, including if there's some safety enhancement necessary for a playground at Maslow ski park, you know, if, you know, we can do something to enhance the safety out there, that there's hopefully some funds left over to do improvements like that.
There was one item that I mentioned to Carl that someone raised to me, and that is the fact that a number of part of the play equipment, a lot of it is metal. And there were areas of it for small children where they can fall in, bang their heads against the metal. And there is actually foam wrap that can be put on some of those areas that are like for the smaller kids just to protect them from banging their heads against metal. So that was one another thing that that someone had just raised to me recently. So. Okay, Alderwoman Shari, is that are those your questions, or did you have any more?
That's it for now. Thank you.
Alderwoman Vukovich?
I'm not for sure. I'm just asking this question. Eligible uses of this fun in your in your presentation or what you sent is investment in water sewer or broadband infrastructure. Don't we have? And if I'm not mistaken, don't we have like lead pipes that we have to get rid of? Don't we have like lead laterals we could get rid of? Is there?
We did that already.
We did that. We did that with $300,000 early.
All of them are done now?
Yep.
My understanding, is that true, Carl? I understand that.
I actually thought that there wasn't. When was this completed? Because I still thought there were still some that were done. We're not done. I'm talking about not the city part, but I'm talking about the part from the house, the lateral part. All of our city is done now.
That is, that is correct. Yeah, from my understanding is, you know, I've been city administrator for one year. Prior to my arrival, all of the laterals had been replaced and funded with approximately $300,000 of ARPA funding that's already been spent.
And then what about any other water sewage projects that we could put this money to that is in our capital gains that we could put this money to? So we would have money to do extra stuff. For instance, like we, I know there was, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there was some water maintenance and some water stuff that we were doing in the capital gains that I know for sure in my district.
Well, something with some alleys too.
Right, or we could use this and then free up money in our our actual budget, because we've budgeted for this money, but if we can free up that money for other things, I just don't see why we would waste it. I mean, I'm not saying wasted, but why would we put it on something that is not necessarily needed in this this environment where we don't we don't know how much revenue we're going to get?
Alderman Doherty?
Yeah, I think Tamika's got a point there. I just think and we should list some other items to try to leave ourselves some flexibility and items to look at. One, we don't know the bid environment. And two, it would leave us a little bit of sway, if you will, on what projects we ultimately pick, but we wouldn't be locking ourselves into just this when I'm not sure how much community would support this. I think people might be looking for us to do other things with the money.
Well, I under and I understand the the severity and the swiftness of this because we literally have to put something in today or tomorrow. Am I correct? Because they should be voting on the debt ceiling by Wednesday. Is that correct, Mayor?
They're supposed to vote later this week. I don't know that the vote has been set. They were required to give 72 hours until the from the time the bill went out. So I think the earliest they could vote is like late Wednesday night.
Right. So I I just if we we have budget problems, we are always looking at, you know, putting money into our fund back. Why can't we take this 1.5 million and and do some infrastructure work that we already have planned with the capital gains on our capital improvement? When it comes to any of the water or sewage stuff that we're going to do? And I don't remember if we've done it all, but I know there was stuff in my district that was slated to have water main stuff done. Why can't we use this money for that? And that would open up some of this money for other things that we might need?
That's a that's a very good question, and certainly the city council can elect to spend this money on those infrastructure improvements for water and sewer. That is certainly an eligible expense. You know, I guess, you know, every year in the five year capital plan and out to 20 years, there are investments in the capital plan for water sewer sanitary improvements. Those are funded solely by the utility and enterprise fund that the city has the rates established to funds, and those have been programmed for and accounted for, and the rate plans that the city has set up for those purposes. If you certainly like to try to do more or defray some of those costs, that could certainly be the the judgment call and opinion of the city council to do that. Sort of the reason why I would propose to do these improvements, and and this came quicker than what we had ever thought. We thought we'd have several months to maybe plan these out and have more concretes and and more talks before this ever occurred, but was to try to make some enhancements to the community with money that we're never going to see again and never be able to do improvements to the parks to try to attract and retain more families to the city of Glendale by by enhancing the community spaces that we have.
My last comment on that is I don't really like to put, and this is a thing of mine, one time money on something that may be completely ongoing. It's like even though we will pay for it right now, but the maintenance of this is ongoing, so it's one time dollars for something that's going to do years and years and years where if we could do the water sewage or even broadband, whatever it was, this is a one time project that we can spend the money and then it's marked off. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Doherty.
I'm more with Tamika on that feeling like if we did these other things that we have to do, we'd still have the option then of money's freed up to do other things, have more community discussion on those things and still could do them. But these other items have to happen. I think I'd rather see us put it toward those.
So I just pulled up the capital improvement plan budget. So we noticed a meeting in which we said we have to allocate these funds. So we have a recommendation from the city administrator for one use of it. We can propose a different use. We are still within the parameters of what we noticed, right? We noticed a meeting where we would have one agenda item, and that is to allocate the unused or unallocated 1.5 million of our capital improvements plan, or I'm sorry, of our ARPA funds. I pulled up the capital improvements plan. We have budgeted, for example, this year $2 million toward the Port Washington Road and Gene Nicolay Road project for the city portion of that project. We could say that we want to allocate 1.5 million of remaining ARPA funds to help for the city's portion of that entire, you know, replacement of a federal interstate highway. That seems to me like, you know, because we we have to spend money towards something, and that becomes toward an infrastructure project. With that recommendation, how does that sit with members of the council?
Well, we know we have to spend that money, so, you know. You know, it saves us 1.5 million if we apply it to that.
Right. Then we have 1.5 million in our capital improvement plan that we can find something else to use.
Right. We wouldn't be bound to do it in a hurry this way.
Yeah, I mean, I I would agree. I would still like to, you know, yeah, without being too definitive, you know, if we could still say like, yeah, if we forget 1.5, can we look at some of the other projects and then, yeah, have a more robust conversation about where we think they should go and get more more insight. I think that's a fair way to do it.
Alderwoman Vukovich and then Alderman Schmelzling.
The but it has to, even if we, so if we move this money, the 1.5 to the Gene Nicolay and that area, it has to deal with water and sewage even, and that's only the water and sewage part of that, correct?
No, there's a whole bunch of things. Water and sewer is just the last line. It has to go toward infrastructure projects in general.
Okay, that's what I'm just making sure that it was infrastructure. Okay.
And we did do a spend a whole bunch already on water infrastructure.
What is the the deadline to spend this money?
It still has to be spent by 2026. The problem is anything that's unallocated is what they're going to clawback.
Well, I would. This is my suggestion to look at something that is going to be um, done in not this year, because we've already budgeted for this money, correct?
Well, we we we
Did we budget?
We bought. Yeah, we we budgeted in our capital improvement plan, and we borrowed already for for this year's projects. But if we were to reallocate this money to the Port Washington Gene Nicolay project and accompanying I-43 expansion, then it's going toward infrastructure, and then we have 1.5 million of our capital improvement borrowing that we could use for another purpose and have more of a discussion in later meetings. Does that make sense?
It's all money.
I just the reason I'm saying this is that this year's budget is done. Let's allocate this money to something that's in a project for 2020, and I don't know what it is. I'm just saying in the the project for 2024.
Okay.
I don't know if that matters.
And that what what the reason why I'm saying it matters, then we borrow less next year, because we've already done the borrowing.
So.
So we borrow less next year initially.
So what we could do is next year, we have 818,000 allocated for street mill and overlay and alley projects and 708,02025. That total is 1,525,000 to cover next year and 2025's street mill overlay and alley rehabilitation. So that could also be a motion. Somebody could move to spend the 1.5 million to cover the 2024 and 2025 street mill overlay, street mill and overlay and alley rehabilitation projects.
Still waiting.
Sorry, Alderman Schmelzling. I I see you there. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just going to take a step back. When I think about what the ARPA funds were there for, it was to help communities in the absence of what they used to have, which was the COVID shutdown and such. So I I look at this as what can we do with this to improve our community in the absence of what we've lost those two years? So I guess throwing it at street mill and overlay, that's, you know, yeah, it'll it'll help draw down our bond issues and such. But I think it's also a special opportunity that we should do something as a net positive to our community with this. Not that, you know, maintaining roads and such aren't, but just I would say outside the realm of usual upkeep and maintenance. So maybe we allocate a portion to, you know, just some of those bond type reductions. But I still feel that there are things that we've been talking about for years. We have, for example, a bike and pedestrian plan. We did a study on. We have not seen any emotion on that in two years. I think things like that to connect our community are important. I also, I don't disagree that improving our parks in the absence of funding that the county is not going to pay for is something that we need to invest in potentially to maintain our our community to the same extent that we our community to the same extent that we have in our neighboring, um, you know, suburb similar communities. So I I guess I I'm more leaning towards doing something that positive with this. And so I I don't know if everyone has had a chance to speak, but I would move to allocate the one and a half million for parks improvements. Uh, I will note within Clutch Park, I would omit the consistent within closed plans because I think we don't know enough about it. Um, and then I would also say, and um bike and pedestrian plan um sidewalk extensions. And and that's what I would move for what we do with this today. And if we choose that we want to allocate it to something else in the future because we find out these things cost too much. Um, I think the bike and pedestrian plans allow us to rein in certain aspects. We still have to prioritize that work. We never came back to do that. Um, and then the parks, I I I think if we just maybe we even omit Clutch Park thinking about it because we do have our Maslow ski park to deal with and we could do some improvements there. So maybe it should be, um, let me restate that motion to allocate one and a half million Glendale ARPA funds or parks improvements within Clutch Park, Maslow ski park and extensions as noted in our bike and pedestrian plan to sidewalk.
Okay, is there a second to his motion? Okay, unfortunately, that motion now fails for lack of a second. Um, one thing I would offer, um, Steve, I I think you're you're on a good path path here. Part of the problem I I think we may face in terms of a clawback is being able to put specifics around it. With what Carl proposed to us, there was a specific plan that had actually already been discussed at the council. Same as if we pull something from the capital improvement plan, those are specific plans that we already have itemized amounts for. Um, I'm afraid that I I do have a fear that if we were to just generally say we're allocating the money to a certain thing, that they may say, okay, show us your plans. What are you doing with it? Where where did you make that motion? Or where did the the council support it? And we might end up losing the funds. I think we need to be a little more specific. And so what Carl presented is specific things from the capital improvement plan budget are also really more specific. Both of them with estimated costs attributed to line items in the capital budget. So um, I I I love where you were going there, Alderman Schmelsing. I just think that there needs to be more specifics or we're gonna risk losing the funds for lack of specificity. So um, Alderwoman Vukovich.
How much did you say that layover was for twenty twenty-four? Because one of the the issues that I I have is, and I'm in this in my district is the alleys. They're horrible. We need to fix the alleys. A lot of Glendale don't, they have driveways, so they don't have alleys.
Yep.
But we have no, we have not really put money in for that. I am going to um, and I think Joanne, I'm not for sure if your area has, I know that the south side of your area has a lot of alley issues. Um.
I live on a street that has alley issues. It turns into a creek every time we have a heavy foot because there's only one in the entire block. There is one drainage uh grate in the middle of the block. Um, I've watched all the alleys get done around Crestwood, and my alley still isn't done. I I see where you're going here, so.
And I don't have an alley, so I don't have a a horse in this race. I don't have an alley, but I
Glendale Avenue.
A lot of my district has alleys. Almost all of my district has alleys. And we have been. Pardon me?
Sorry, I was just gonna say I agree. The alleys in uh District One area, particularly the Spuckerville area, are in need of repair, particularly the one that runs north-south by Route forty-three.
So if I'm going to, if I was, I I'm gonna make a motion to allocate the one point five million dollars to the alley infrastructure and um what is, what else is there? Um.
There there was, if you're asking in the capital improvement for next year, there was
Yes.
eighteen that was allocated to all of our street mill overlay and alley projects, and for the next year, it was seven oh wait a minute. Eight eighteen and seven oh eight. And that's the next two years of alley work as well as the um street mill and overlay.
So I would mo- make a motion to fund the next two years of alley work and street layover. Lay, was it lay what?
Street overlays. Overlay, yep.
Because that is something that definitely is needed. Um, and it's specific.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
All second.
Okay, move by Alderman Vukovich, second by Alderman Bailey. So now that is the motion before us. So we do have a list of all the properties that would be done next year. Yeah, that's in the capital improvement plan budget, eight eighteen next year, seven oh eight the following year. And the Alderwoman has moved, the Alderman has seconded that we allocate one point five million to cover the street mill and overlay and alley projects for the next two years. So I'll open it up now for discussion. Alderman Doherty?
I certainly like some of the things Steve had to say. So Steve, I I didn't second that because it wasn't an agreement that we need to look at those things. I'm just quite concerned we can't look at them quick enough to meet the requirements for this, but money is money. If we take care of these other items and help ourselves in a budget, we have in theory money to be used to look at other items, and I am quite concerned on the particular project brought up here on the on the parks, the maintenance cost of that over time. I'm I'm I don't have any idea, but my gut feel is it will be more than you think.
I would agree.
Alderman Gellhart, go ahead.
Uh, just for clarification, then, so the street overlay a- and the um the alley projects, I thought that you had said that uh one was to be for twenty twenty-four and the other for twenty twenty-five, is that right?
It's for, yes, not this year. It's for next year and the following year, yes.
And so from a time standpoint, you know, would be, would we be meeting the deadlines for, you know, the the ARPA funds?
Yeah, ARPA funds have to be exhausted by twenty twenty-six. So, for example, if a project was bid out and was in the middle of being done and it took two or three years to do, has to be done and spent by twenty twenty-six. But they wouldn't be able to claw back because it's already a project that has been approved and is already moving forward. So in this particular case, pulling something from capital improvements actually allows us to allocate the funds to something that is already like we have plans for. We've already done some engineering. We already know cost estimates. And so it it becomes a much more tangible project, and it wouldn't be hard to get from Clark Deets um data to back up and support this beyond the estimates that are already in the capital improvement plan.
Question.
Alderman Schmelsing, I see your hand.
Thank you. What do we have listed right now in the capital improvement for bike and pedestrian plan work?
Um, hold on a second here. Let me pull back up.
I know we have sidewalk improvements, but I usually that's for repairs.
Right, there's a sidewalk rehabilitation. Um. So I mean, we we are adding so specifically like a line item, there's not. I do know that in the Port Washington project, part of what we're funding there are the addition of bike lanes to Port Washington Road as well as to Gene Nicolay Road.
And we have the trail up on Green Bay as well.
Yep, Green Bay, riding bike lanes, riding sidewalks. That's also part of the a project. So I mean, we we have allocated to some degree in upcoming years, but we don't have that as like a specific line item that is like dead, like these are things that came out of the bike and pedestrian plan that we're putting money toward. We just started incorporating them into a number of upcoming projects like Green Bay. Like, we're actually right now in talks with the county on adding sidewalk from um when you come into the city on Good Hope Road, so down by Stratech all the way along on the the south side of Good Hope Road, all the way to the Milwaukee River Parkway. So that's a conversation we're having. So.
And we're doing that because those are all like joint type efforts where there would be a cost share.
Right, and where we get to implement aspects of our bike and pedestrian plan.
So.
Like cost sharing with somebody else's work.
Yeah, I'm still looking at when we're, there's certain places we're not going to have that type of opportunity within the city. So um I still feel if we're not, those are specific items I've had quoted out by Clark Deets, like I think it was a hundred dollars a a linear foot is what it would cost to put in sidewalk. Um, I would suggest we we still look at doing something more than just what we have listed right now in our um alleyways and street overlay, because that would be a net improvement, not just a repair to our community with this funding. So um I guess I would do a um a friendly motion on top of Tamika's motion. An amended motion, thank you, Alderwoman Shaw. Um, to allocate let's say one hundred thousand to two um prioritized per the bike and pedestrian plan um sidewalk additions.
Okay, is there a second to the motion to amend?
Point of order, I guess. Does that meet the requirements of what we're trying to do as far as? You know, I don't want to split this up now and then we don't meet the requirement of getting the money at all, then we all lost.
Right, and well, I think I believe that there has to be, like, part of the idea behind this was projects have to have already been they have to have already been vetted, whereas any of the projects that we have proposed, whether it be the 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 playground equipment and the improvements in the park or any of these capital improvements that we're pulling from our capital budget, these are things that have already been vetted. Engineers have already looked at. They've already come back with cost estimates. One of the things I might recommend, because there there wasn't a second to the motion, um and i- i- is that what we what we could do is Alderman Schmelsing, we were freeing up one point five million. We could now look at adding a few hundred thousand in sidewalk addition in our capital improvements in twenty-four and twenty-five, have time to work with our engineering staff to get those costed out. We could still end up borrowing less over the next couple of years for our capital improvements and still get the things that Alderman Schmelsing wants um by getting them added in because we're freeing up one point five million of that fund.
What was the point of our bike and pedestrian plan if it wasn't for doing just this type of moment?
So I understand what you're saying, but when we get a call on a Friday and we have to have projects ready by a Tuesday for a meeting, it doesn't really give us a lot of time if we haven't been working on those things, although we have been, right? We've been adding bike and pedestrian stuff into a lot of other projects that we're co-working with other people. But it doesn't give us time to go to our engineers and ask them to cost things out, vet them and put together some preliminary plans over a holiday weekend. And so today's meeting is to get something tangible that we can allocate to. Um.
I do have. That'll be something I asked on the next agenda then.
What?
I said that'll be something I ask we put on the next agenda then. To have a prioritized view of the bike and pedestrian plan, um, Mr. Gill, um, Warwick, please do so.
Okay. Thank you. I have Alderman Gellhart and Alderwoman Vukovich.
Uh, and just kind of uh addressing some of the uh the issues that that uh uh Steve has brought up, I would also point out that there's a there's a good chance that we're gonna have increased shared revenue that we might be able to apply to projects uh like the the ones that you're suggesting, uh, Steve.
Yeah. Alderman Vukovich?
Um, the reason I am pushing for this money to go for something tangible because of the quality of life through these alleys. These are gonna impact neighborhoods. I understand I'm a pedestrian and 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 I understand that we want pedestrian and bikes. I don't ride a bike and I barely walk anywhere. That's just me. I'm fat. This is what I do. But getting these overlays, these alleys are going, especially in my district, they don't have the luxury of actually riding the bikes because we don't have bike lanes around on Port. We will eventually.
I said sidewalk, thank you.
Let me finish. But the alleys and the sidewalks are very important on my, in my district. They need, we actually use them to get in and out to park because there's no, they don't have driveways. So they have to park in the alleys. They have to go into their garages. So this is something that is literally a a a a necessity for this to get fixed. So it is a improvement of quality of life improvement.
And and I do understand uh Alderman Schmelsing's concern. You know, one of the things that I have been upset about for a number of years, but I haven't kept harping on it, but when we rebuilt City Hall, we were supposed to put solar on the roof. We still don't have solar panels on the roof. If we could do those for one point five million dollars, I'd have been saying, let's do the solar panels. We already know that it's that in terms of like cost to do them and then maintenance and everything else, even though we built a solar-ready building, we're not, we still don't have the solar on the roof. So like that was the thing we prioritized in twenty seventeen. We did a bike and pedestrian plan in twenty twenty. We haven't pedestrian, because of budget issues, we haven't prioritized a lot of these things that have been important. So I mean, tonight was mentally to hold a meeting to allocate funds to something. I think we found something. I I support the motion. I think we found something we can allocate to. It frees up funds now for some of the other things. I absolutely support wanting to, you know, start highlighting our bike and pedestrian plan and start finding ways where we can, you make this a a a more bike-friendly city. I I also want to find a way for us to get solar on the roof of City Hall and not, you know, by twenty thirty-five, but um so we we're gonna figure out how we we make those other things happen. Uh, anyone else in the discussion here? All right, so we have a motion from Alderwoman Vukovich, a second. Um. Um. Sorry.
It was for Philip.
City Administrator just texted me. It looks like road improvements are not ARPA-eligible. Doug, what about alleys? Um.
I'm just looking at the Department of Treasury interpretation. The specific rule on there was capital improvements that are specifically resulting from public health and safety hazards as a result of the pandemic and or water and sewer and broadband improvements specifically. Um, we were able to pull the park improvements in there because the Department of Treasury classified those as a public health improvement uh which would be necessary to bring people out of the pandemic. So they were pretty specific on some of the rules. Um, so I just wanted to look that up in terms of um our road resurfacing um cost-eligible improvements for it. It doesn't look like it is. Um, water and sewers certainly are. Those are borrowed funds or funds spent with fu- funds on hand specifically from the proprietary fund and not from the city's general um revenue funds.
So I guess what what can we in our, is there anything in our capital improvement budget that we can pull from?
Our capital improvement um budget, the CIP that I have pulled up here and that you're looking at too, Mayor Kennedy, is specifically um what I will call mostly maintenance items with the exception of a new police facility, which I guess you could classify as a maintenance item too, as well as the purchase of public works, police vehicles, and then general maintenance such as cracked ceiling sidewalks. Um, so outside of that, I do not see eligible expenses on here that would classify that in the five-year capital plan as being ARPA-eligible with the exception of the water main replacement program for the next two years, which totals about three million dollars in the next two years.
But isn't that paid for by the water utility?
That is correct. Yes, that is paid for specifically by the water and sewer and uh rates that um the residents and the businesses of the city in Glendale pay, and that's figured into the rates and charges that are already in place.
So if we were to utilize those funds for that, I do see you, Alderwoman Shaw. If we were to utilize the funds for that, what would that mean in terms of like the water bill? Would people's water bill then go down for a while?
Uh, we're already running a deficit because our water and sewer rates have not been adjusted over, I believe, the last seven years. So the last two years, we've started to run a deficit that we're gonna need to start to revisit our rate plan to make sure that we can fund all of our water and sewer um improvements. So will taking one point five million in capital improvements mean we won't have a deficit for twenty twenty-four? I don't have a full rate plan and answer for you yet, but we are working on um something like that.
Well, we have a one point five million dollar less deficit.
So Alderwoman Shaw is next, and then Alderman Gellhart.
Question on what um city administrator Warwick was talking about regarding infrastructure and alley and street overlay. With respect to that, by fixing the alleys, wouldn't that allow people to come out and ha- have a better life and health? Because they're able to leave their property to at least enjoy life and health?
I would say that that's that's a pretty tough argument to make that people can't leave their house without this improvement be done. It may be more difficult. I'm just trying to be careful here. Uh, uh, that's all I'm saying with this interpretation. I'm looking at it here last minute on the computer, so. I may not be one hundred percent on this, and if we certainly wanna take the chance and opportunity to do that, that's up to the city council. I'm just trying to relay the research I'm doing here, cause I did not anticipate the discussion, um, regarding road resurfacing, um, and use of ARPA funds. Cause I have not seen it as eligible expense in any of the research that I had done. Um, and there's no articles listed that it is an eligible expense. That was my first thing, and then I, um. Had to search other aspects of it to find that. Generally, people are saying it is not an eligible expense. Unless you can directly relate it to the public health and safety of the community.
Oh, it'd be safety on the alleyway to get in and out of their, their homestead.
Uh, uh. Certainly make that interpretation. I'm just providing the, uh, the opinion that it may not be eligible if we wanna make that. Really, and we certainly can, can do that.
Alderman Galhard?
I- i- is there some component of, uh, the I forty three expansion? That can be directly linked to say sewer or water? I mean, it seems to me that they're installing a lot of pipes everywhere. Uh, and that if we could say, okay, we're gonna put one point five million towards the three million dollar price tag of. Our contribution to this and, and that is going, you know, to this. There's something that fits within the definition of the ARPA funds, the sewer water, whatever that might be. Uh, could we do that?
Yeah, so I had a concern about that initially when it was brought up by Mayor Kennedy of spending money on ARPA projects that have already been completed. And already been financed. I don't know what the ruling on that is, but to me, that would be a tough one to go down to. I would just be concerned about allocating funds that we're gonna spend in the future that have really already been spent. We've borrowed for and the projects have been completed. Again, I don't know the exact ruling on it is, I'm not an ARPA expert, but that is the first thing that I have. I know I've researched it before and discussed it, but what the final ruling is, I don't have a clear answer for that one. If we were gonna spend it on water and sewer infrastructure, I would recommend doing it on the future twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five projects. That are listed in the CIP plan.
Alderman Doherty, you had your hand up.
My big concern is I don't wanna not use the money. But I also don't wanna commit money now for projects like a park thing. I don't know what interest the community has. I'd certainly want a lot more input before we commit to that. And we're committing to more costs down the road that we don't even know yet. It just doesn't seem to make sense to me. You're taking some money, you got a windfall, if you will, one point five. And you say, well, okay, let's put it in this park thing that's also gonna cost us more money down the road. Meanwhile, you're gonna have a deficit in water, you got other problems, it doesn't make any sense to me. Let's spend the money where we know we can get benefit from it now, get the one point five. Have a chance to talk about things Steve's talking about, talk about all kinds of other things where we might wanna do some other things, cause we've helped ourselves out. But I, I think just spending this on something I don't know we want or what it will cost in the future makes no sense to me.
So here's just my opinion, sorry, Mayor Kennedy, just as a, a city administrator, you look at the five-year capital plan. There's zero costs in there of, of, of expenses to enhance or improve the community, whether parks, pedestrians. Things like that, other than the maintenance of the stuff that's existing. Um, you know, as, as somebody who has run a city, been involved in the day-to-day planning and operation. It is good practice for a community to use some of its funding to try to improve and enhance the community. I know we did that with Maslow ski park three or four years ago. Um, but it doesn't look like we're taking many planning steps to do that, at least in the next five years. Um, that's why I started the discussion on this and I apologize again that it is so. It, it has been presented in this manner because the idea was to take the next three or four months and prepare more information. We weren't afforded that opportunity. Um, but what I have read here is that a small amount of ARPA funds have been. Used for traffic calming design and to enforce safe driving behaviors. Fund used, used to update safety features such as curb extensions, raised sidewalks and the application of speed humps to slow drivers. Uh, have been the accepted use of ARPA funds for, uh, streets and roads.
See anything specific to sidewalk?
Yes, sidewalks and, and open park land is. Um, so public space, um, has been about fifty percent of the total money of ARPA allocated and spent. Water and sewer improvements, I'm just, I don't have a full percentage on these, looks to be about twenty percent. Public transportation, um, roads and bridges, uh, green infrastructure and broadband make up the remaining, let's just say twenty five percent of. Our, our, our spend, funds spent across the country.
Alderman Vukovich, you're next.
Okay, um. Can the funds be used, even though we've been trying to get those funds for the, the, um. The roundabout off of Silver Spring?
So they probably could be because that would be traffic calming or traffic enhancement, which is public safety, except we don't have them costed out. We don't have numbers in front of us for that.
I thought we, I, I'm just asking, um, I thought we had put a proposal, cause we were trying to get funds from. Congresswoman Moore. I thought we had some dollars of what that estimate of what that would cost.
We, we do, but what changed is the county has been talking with Carl and Charlie and Mustafa. Over the last probably six or eight weeks. They actually wanna partner with us on the redesign of Silver Spring because they wanna put in a bus rapid transit line, which will take up one of the lanes. Which now changes that project. And it also changed, it all, it makes the project more expensive, but the funds are, for the digital costs are gonna come from elsewhere. But what it also means is that also you can't, because we already got the funds for the, in the earmark. You can't use these toward projects that were already funded with federal funds. So there's sort of two things there.
So we got the earmark money already?
We, we, we got the four million. Yes. Yep, so, um, I guess the, what I would like to, uh, propose, because the, the, the motion made by Alderman Vukovich and Alderman Bailey. At this point, I'm gonna rule out of order because it, it, it does not conform to the legislation. Um, what I would like to ask, because we're already up, you, we've already been at this for an hour. Um, is, is, we have in next year's budget already one point five zero nine million, so a million five hundred nine thousand. Toward water main replacement. We know that ARPA funds can go toward that. We know that there's a deficit in the water utility. If we could dedicate this to that, that frees up of the one point five million that we have in there already for this. You know, if we use the ARPA funds for it, we can then work on a plan for alley replacements, sidewalk enhancements. A number of these other things as a way to spend that money and still stay within our budget. But it also allows us to satisfy the purpose of what we have right now and we have it well documented already.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
Wasn't that the original set of wa- using it for water? And water, okay, I just wanted to see if I was crazy.
No, 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 no. But, but originally, you, this, the, originally the city administrator had said that we, um. That the water utility pays for those things separately, but if the water utility is currently running a deficit and we would be borrowing anyway for the capital improvement. We may as well go ahead and just apply it toward that, cause we own our own water utility, so. Alright, can we get a motion then to allocate the one point five million toward the twenty twenty four water main replacement?
So moved.
Move by Alderman Bailey, seconded by Alderman V- Alderman Vukovich. Um, any additional discussion? Okay, I just wanna say before we call the vote on this and wrap up the meeting, that I love the conversation it was held today. I think we have a lot of great ideas. And so we need to all be getting those ideas and working directly with the city administrator to make sure that they become the amended capital improvement budget. That we get later this year, cause I think a lot of this stuff we can be looking to cover now that we freed up one point five million for next year. Alderman Vukovich, yes.
And I do wanna say thank you to the mayor and to, uh, Carl. Um, our city administrator, because there are other cities who may lose their dollars. Because they have not had, or done the initiative to call a special session meeting, including our state. Um, our state, Wisconsin, they may lose their money, but they don't wanna talk about it. And City Milwaukee and some other places have not been proactive. Thank you for, uh, you know, us being here to be proactive, so we don't lose that, that, those dollars.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And call for a vote then, all those in favor of the motion to allocate the one point five million to the twenty twenty four water main replacement projects, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Oh.
Okay, uh, there's one no, so five ayes and one no. Uh, the motion carries. Um. And we, that's the only thing we were noticed to discuss tonight. Um, I'll just ask the city administrator, do you have any announcements or anything that we should know before we, before we have a motion to adjourn?
I have no announcements, so then we have a meeting on June twelfth, I believe, is the next city council meeting in these chambers.
Okay. Alright, um, all, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. By Alderman Galhard, seconded by Alderman Doherty, all those in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? We stand adjourned at seven oh three PM, thank you.
Thank you.